For those who have not been able to have a cup of tea for breakfast, or whatever you call it, there is a lot of tea at the normal. There is a chat about dessert for those who want to move there. You can go for breakfast as we... But first, from the chair, for me. I am saying this for most of my people who would be in the morning hour. I believe that it could be just a company. But it's also interesting to consider that. Allow me to recognize the country director, Vazi. Dr. Mireve Peti. Please thank you so much for being able to contribute all of us. I appreciate all the input. Yeah, as we wait, I am told that our east is getting closer. So as we wait, there are people who want to organize. And uh... We actually know, I want to give you the opportunity to tell us what has happened, whether you are vaccinated or vaccinated, and also if you're vaccinated. From Kanong District.
Smartphone disconnected.
First, we need to... We need to see. I believe this is one of the issues in the area. Where there has been... Is high, and they are asking why does it... We are getting vaccinated. Yes, the negative, maybe it's... Getting... And we thought they would come out, just because we had... Many children who had been... Eight, nine, ten, six months, eleven years. And that's it, the area is very challenged, and for us, we invested... We are in a community that collects, including those who struggle here, and we're making... This kind of... So, our... Our role to make the area comfortable, designing, and building forward here in the ancient, different areas, and what we can do to maintain this growth. The security challenge matters now, after that, and the mass distribution in nine areas. The area is... Which are the other ones? Which is... That's true, and still I appreciate the continued challenge, and we want to... Today, we share with you. Thank you very much, DHO Kanong District. And uh...
To connect your... 710. Go to the Bluetooth menu on your mobile device and... From the list.
For those who implement the big cycle, we shall also hope for you. The challenges, and that's why we are here, to understand the challenges of our Kanong company. Uh, I would want to look for you from the way you... Yes, you can also tell us something, introduce your team, and tell us anything related to today's engagement.
Good morning, everybody. This is the way. We are here with the smartphone. Connect the account, Mr. Ayash's right. Disconnected. And uh, I'm... My name is... Disconnected. And repeated by H. G. And Mr. Piersse Brown. And after this, and the acting director, we are here to see how we can engage communities in a way that... It's amazing.
Thank you, thank you so much, more. From the Waysh District. You are welcome. As I keep seeing people coming in, please ensure that you have made your registration appropriate. So that everyone, as we leave you, everyone is captured.
Hello, Kanon.
Yes. I want, I want you to give me one yes. And, and, and... As we wait for the next thing to arrive, we need to know each other. And we do, um... We want to know this guy. Who you are, where you come from, what you do. Thank you, this is part of my team, Vazi. Amen. And it's scary. You should use your telephone. If you are not able to teach one, do it from your phone myself. Thank you. And it's scary, I find it very... On your day, you will... That's... The difference in tempo. The more so requested in the process, the easier it will be to... What I've heard. And show clear support, and I'm sure it's the right to... Although it's a process of a very special... Let me introduce the teams. The car for... Dr. Alexander Alfred, a focus for... I said. They are, they are giving us ones, because they are very, they are just very well. Unfortunately, they... They are very many, and we will solve, and the darkness. Yet, for them to live where they need themselves, we must have other people there. The doctor, I believe, that my day, that the church have a... And I hope so, it's... Or a... Or a trip. I'm sure she's by, but I'm sure you can tell me. But she knows, she knows, but she's very young, but... This team. We have the money with one part. One part. It is a bit far, but for that, we have cars. And the cover, I saw, which I want to give, and give us a minute. However, you see. However, we talk, we are requesting, and I was... Move your time, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And... Yeah, I want this all sorted here. Morning, everybody. Yeah, um, senior, everyone, we have to... We believe, we are coming, and the church. And this, and this is... We have... The church. Is going... To us, and... And I must say, I think, my experience, our... We took out. We have, we have, we still have... They don't show, we have, we have, we still have. What, yes, we will have, we will... One person, one person, please. Please, I said, I think. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we are almost coming to the starting point of this program. And as we see people being pressured in, I think we are getting set to move. Um... Allow me to recognize the... But the treasures, the house of Dr. Henry Mirese. The chair of the Health Services Commission. Please let's welcome him. I want to say, oh, there is the rifle, and the president is in the room with us, right, Dr. Cavanda. Dr. Cavanda, the representative of Mission. You must... And I would need to... Coming. And I, I, I expect someone to enter in English shortly. And we are just here, making an introduction. I also want to take a listen to the meeting. To introduce one more, take one, two. For recognition, as we wait to start. And I have this table, introduce, as well, where you come from.
Uh, thank you so much, for the letter. Brothers and sisters, in our spirit, and all of us. My ladies, Reverend Joseph Meuyunji. And that's answered, very well, what it asks. And it is in Mission District, for this.
Morning, everybody. My name is Alex Bellevue, acting, the head of Mission District. Thank you, boys. And I am the acting director of Mission. Um, who's the... From Kanong, yes. Program, I can, I can say, I was... I was... Then, I'm not sure if I understand, but you guys, yes.
Thank you, thank you so much. And uh... I want to introduce now, fully, the agenda of today. We are going to start with the answers. We shall have open a prayer. Which will be led by Reverend Joseph Meuyunji, the vice secretary of West Africa, the ESS. Then, after that... After the prayers, we shall have... The others see... To welcome us into the city. We shall have the DHO representative. Then, we have remarks to the country director, Vazi. Dr. Cavanda, Richard will give us the main objectives of today's meeting. Overview of impressive performance by Albert Westjean. We shall come in with the... Dr. Jen, our cause. We shall have Dr. Muggay Richard. Then, we shall have a keynote address, and later, have a panel discussion, and close this one. The audience and uh... The audience arrangement shall be moderated by Dr. Cavanda, with... Cavanda will take us through. I want also to recognize the presence and arrival of Dr. Muggay Richard, the Commissioner of Productive Health Services. You must welcome, Dr. I want also to recognize the arrival, presence of Dr. Ronald Ochachre, Assistant Commissioner of Health Promotion. And I see you, you must welcome. Dr. Navasa Abbott, Commissioner of Health, in the Royal National Health Services. You're welcome. I also want to pre-recognize the senior public relations officer, health, Emmanuel Inevioda. Emmanuel Inevioda, please wave to the people. Emmanuel. Emmanuel Inevioda. I am making an introduction to recognize your presence, please wave to the audience. At this time, I would want us to wake up and ask for the answers to play. And what? I have read that we shall see the answer when it comes. This honor arrives. So for now, let us start with a prayer. And the other programs continue, we shall read, that's when we shall see the answer. So can we have the open prayer for this meeting, Vazi?
Thank you so much, may we stand and pray. And just stand and pray. Darling Father, we thank you for giving us opportunity to see a new day in our lives. We thank you for the organization of this worship. To hear that you guide us, to guide our possibilities, and that you give us courage, our special, as we contribute towards whatever is yet to be presented to us. And we pray for your presence, that we get good time. From the time we arrive here, up until time we shall be living in this place. And your presence, for the Father, for the Son, and for the Holy Spirit, help us. Be with us. Take care of us, remain with us, now and forevermore.
Amen.
Amen.
And as a symbol.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Absa Mibuganda, standing here for the RSC Baracity. And we want to talk you. To Barara. The R A R O P P A R A. We want to report that the situation here in Baracity. Is normal and calm. So we want you to stay here. And we want you to be at work. Uh, two. I want to organize. If there are one here, we don't forget our political leaders. The Health Society Chairman. And we have the Health Society Chairman Stan for recognition. Health Society Chairman, this is our Reverend. You all come. Who want to see our R S Is from different R S Is. High best of recognition. Thank you for coming. Uh, I think those are the details. Then we want to organize contacts if they are here or they are with the generals. And guys, I saw the one in Baracity. And then the Health Professionals. The H O Z and the rest. Thank you for coming. Then we want to organize the all of our leaders around. Who are come. Chairman and the other group. Then of course, we want to organize our leaders leaders. Led by the Deputy Secretary of West Africa. The West Africa. Who want to come. And then of course, we don't forget the. Our big people from the Ministry of Health. Led by the President. Who want to come. And we are going, we are going to share the word. And reading up. So we're all so glad we are here by each side, but it's okay. Whoever is who have come. So I want to thank the ones who are coming from Baracity. Uh, thank you for coming. And of course, thank you for implementing the N R M manifesto. Because the realization is one of our manifestos. So thank you for implementing that one. So we have what every now that it is coming to the election period. So we have our expectations here. We understand that some expenses. Uh, are not being well in terms of the organization. And we want here from you what we can do. I hope you have those solutions for that. Then two. Uh, we want to know if this, especially the, the malaria, malaria situation. Has been ruled over, over eight years. In preparation. We also want here from you. Those that have been executed. And I want again to remove the doubt that the, it has some challenges. As people say, especially from the opposition. So we want you to assure our people that the vaccine is good. Of course, we try. Then I also want to, now that we have religious leaders here. You can use the air that we, that we build as office of the President. I think all this is how that they are there. So if we recharge it, we can spread the gospel. So that we have people, we're ready. Of course, we want a higher education, a higher protection. So, uh, now that we don't have much time. Because our expectations are in you, you the different parts. So we want to give you enough time so that you tell us what you want here. So I want to pay this opportunity. And open this engagement officially. That is all.
Thank you, RSC Representative. And, uh. Like you said, it's time is not on our side. Let's try to. And I invite the representative of the H O's. Here we are having two, two regions, members. On Colley and, and Chigazi. There are colleagues and Chigazi H O's are agreeing that. One of the H O's will speak on behalf of this country. And let me invite one more thing, Reverend Buddha. Dr. Edson, to come and give a little class.
Thank you. Uh, MC for today. Uh, protocol is out. I will not, uh, make anybody stand up. Of course, we have introduced ourselves. Uh, let me, uh, come to the point. As the H O's, I'm, I'm called Dr. Edson, Mr. Edson. H O is Hindu. And at the center. I'm the Executive of the H O's. And I work as a treasure. For the H O's Association. So that's why I'm representing them. Uh, as the H O's. We want to thank. Uh, the government, especially the municipal peers organizing this. And we want to thank all of you. Uh, for coming for this meeting, which is already, uh, on immunization covered. Uh, we want to. Encourage you. To pay more attention. On the objectives they are bringing for this meeting. And I want to request. My favorite H O's. To always observe two things while executing their mandates. One, observe the policies according to God. Don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. Then two, we observe the policies according to God. And be separate. Let us, uh, respect our leaders. Especially. The political. The representatives of the central government. And the administration. That's when we shall also be respected. By the people we lead, because we shall be having the support of our leaders. If one perform better. Let me also, uh, express on this, on the grounds. Especially alcohol. If possible, let us not take alcohol. Because it's not easy to regulate. Let us follow the standing orders. Most police workers have been destroyed by alcohol. Even when I was a student, there was a lecturer. Who failed to go and study in South Africa. He had a mask because of alcohol. And he stayed premature. And we keep quiet. Let us work as a team, as the H O's, we refrain from alcohol. Because alcohol in the source of others. Going for women, we have wives. Why should we go for others? They taking people's money. Because of alcoholism. Because when you go there, you want to buy a drink. You don't have money, now we take money for immunization. You want the best woman, you take money for immunization. So let us help each other, colleagues. If we have someone who has those habits, let us do today. I personally, I have. I have over 10 minutes. So let us work hard on that. If we do that, we shall do our God's work and our government's work. Because whatever we are doing, we agree with them for both and our country. And drastically, let us always listen and speak. What the President, his excellence normally tells us. There are seven health tips of our President. And number two about those tips is immunization against immunization diseases. Number one is eating healthy and doing exercises. And the number seven is, uh. Going for health checkups regularly. Whenever we get the chance, go to the radio, let us talk about it. Thank you so much, I am seeing all this for both and my country.
Thank you, Chair, for all the H O's in the region, representing the two. At this moment. I want to write. The, the Country Director. Madam. Dr. Please come take a podium and say your words. And I want to appreciate you for supporting this call.
Ladies and gentlemen. The Prime Minister, Secretary of the Ministry of Health, Dr. Patrick Niazessha. The Chief Assistant, the Health Service Commissioner, Dr. Henry Weller. Commissioners from the Ministry of Health. The Chief Chief Kavanda, the Chief Chief Tundaki, and Dr. Navasan. Other senior leaders from the Ministry of Health. Our hosts, the leaders from Barara City. District leaders from Ancoly and Chigazi. Religious leaders, partners of Ministry of Health. Ladies and gentlemen. Good morning to you all. As already introduced, I'm Dr. Betty Revere. I work as a County Director for Path in Yaganda. Path is a local team of innovators working to eliminate health difficulties. So all people, communities, and economies can thrive. We are privileged to be here and to work with the Ministry of Health as one of the partners. That supports Yaganda's immunization program to improve on its mandate. Just recently, Path was given a mandate by the Ministry of Health under the great leadership of UNEPY. To lead the creation of a civil society aid and framework for immunization. A requirement that was determined by the 2021. Under the Civil Society and Community Aid Mechanism. We are all, all countries are obliged to allocate at least 10% of their funding for R A R. To civil society organizations to support immunization interventions. As such, I'm happy to report that recently and in this year 2025. We have set an unprecedented grant entry of a total of 25 local civil society organizations. That have joined the partnership with the Ministry of Health. And I'm also report that two of them are represented here. And I'd like to ask the Executive Director for Impact, Emily Antalika, which is standing in recognition. And, uh. In addition to the others that are working, I think in copy as well, is working in the same region. I want to ask the presentation of the copy also standing in recognition. Under this partnership, CSOs are particularly playing a significant and catalytic role. Of supporting UNEPY in its efforts to strengthen routine immunization. Reach the zero dose and unimmunized children. Especially in underserved and difficult to reach communities across the country. Our guest of honor in her session at the Ministry of Health leadership. We want to assure you that these CSOs have been working for the last couple of months. Districts are already testifying with the tremendous impact they are having in the immunization space. And we are looking forward to seeing more games as they continue to work and implement. The CSO interventions are already facilitating improvements. Intended demand generation for immunization services. They are supporting districts to conduct additional immunization outreach. And they are following that implementation of immunization micro plans developed at the district and facility level. The CSOs are also putting a lot of focus on data capture and processing. And paying keen attention to the quality of data that is generated at health facilities. And immunization outreach and finally making its way to the Ministry of Health. They also support the holding of district performance meetings. And are also helping and supporting with the voter tracking and referrals at community level. In means, so they are leveraging the existence of H T's, local councils. And other non-hosped ex-proilers such as our social workers. And other community personalization to avoid duplication of efforts. As I mentioned earlier, and I'd like to give an intimate alignment to the priorities of the Ministry of Health. Which includes having a deepened focus on integrating demand generation for immunization. With other primary healthcare services. Because in all these services, we are actually targeting certain members and even the central halls. But we are also working through one healthcare system. We are all embracing integration positively. Because it has the potential to achieve full witness. If it is well planned and embraced by all key stakeholders. And as I conclude, I'd like to thank all stakeholders. Who have managed to make it here in big numbers for this town hall engagement. It also has committed and dedicated to us towards improving the health of our people. Through immunization and other essential health services. With those remarks, thank you for listening to me. And I wish all of us a great liberation session. Thank you very much.
And I need more, more of the gratitude. Thank you very much and, uh. I would now take this great honor. To go to the interviews. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our ladies and gentlemen. The other CCs and other CCs are present. Chair Passons, religious leaders. Police from Ministry of Health. Country Director Pass. And all our IPC are present. All our health workers from the region. I request that I stand on the proponent who has already been welcomed by the G. Ladies and gentlemen. Good morning to you all. Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
Our story is started with some tea. So I expect some energy. Uh we will be discussing the course in English and in Akita. So my apologies for chattering. When my brother in law called me, he asked you and I, but I just didn't talk about it. Uh, the speaker is the PhD doctor absent. She left at six. She left at six. She left at six. Jay from San, uh, protest. But she's training us when she comes back. So whatever, whatever, but she didn't leave a key, key note address and the official record was sent. And then apologies again for, I think I would say this communication. This meeting, we are supposed to inform you that we are starting at ten. But I think our people didn't do a good job. They let you come here at eight thirty. But I think that we should have started at ten. So we started our own. We believe it. I think I know most of you. Because we are in the right direction. I'm called Rafaela Maresa. I used to be a director general of health services in the village of Paris. And this is where I went to go to America. When I was being retired. And they say, hmm, what was the job of the American? Where was the country of the hand? But the country did not find the lesson in the world that you get. So they are pretty good. And for a German health service mission. The German health service, the French, the British, the European, the French, the British, the British. The good day job, but from a different way. But I can assure you, I'm more relaxed. I have this stress thing. It's not as distant as in the ditch. Because the ditch is very extensive. So, so that's where I am. But also, of course, I did work together with the Ministry of Health. You know, Health Service Commission is an independent commission. There can be no judicial service commission, public service commission, and the education service commission. And it is constituted by an acting parliament and it requires it be paid. But of course, I worked with the Ministry of Health, I really think that I cannot be paid by the Ministry of Health. I feel that my working relationship with Ministry of Health is very important because we serve the same goal. So that's why I still find myself working very closely with Ministry of Health. And the reason that I participate in some of these things. Because if you go there and sit in the workers' house and sell it, they're the Ministry of Health. How will you know such a thing which are taking place here? As you plan for it, you will be among the source of Ministry of Health. You need to be part of the person. You need to go on the ground and know whether the problem is there and how you work together with Ministry of Health if you are going to help them. It will be a work of effort. So I wanted to clarify in that a bit. But back to our meeting, you all very, very welcome to this very important meeting. For our colleague, Chikese. That's why I was saying that you may add something much of the way with it. Because I understand that three about ninety percent of us will understand. So you are born in it, something that you cannot come and say to us. And the English is going to constrain you from saying what you wanted to say. Please say to my car. And I also want to believe that with my authority, I can understand. Because I know I studied for Montana here for six years. Senior one, senior six. But because they can understand my thought and they can understand their meaning. I actually feel it will happen. Because they speak with thought, they understand. They speak with their body, they understand. So we all move through. Now, I think the last time we had a good meeting like this was in the past. They remember it was even in this hotel, but they were up there. And we had very good discussions. How we work together on top of it. And we had very useful discussions. And again, at that time, it involved the RDCs, it involved the RCCs, it involved chairpersons, religious leaders, and of course, the health workers and other stakeholders and of course, our colleagues, preventing partners. And it's the same audience again today. Uh of course, in this region, you don't have cultural leaders. We have had this kind of engagement in other regions. And in those regions, by the course, we have to read that the person be part of this discussion. Because now, but we have a duty when we are talking about improving services at the community and also with them. But in this area, we don't have cultural leaders yet. But also the political leaders that we have, the religious leaders that we have this goal and the health workers, the preventing battery, that's a very important force. That's a very important force if we are going to talk about the health services. So when we compare them with talk of mansektor approach, but we don't want to use English. And I want to follow my colleagues when they are going to present. I want us to be right. This are going to be English. Let's use things that are working on us on the area. Let's, let's use simple language where I can go refuse free. But still, so to come over, say, from the farm valley, involve in giving. Well, there is a job, a job, a job, a political, a job, a chief, a legislative officer, a mayor. To show that you're broken, yes, it's not a role of what, or health workers are. This can be that's the main objective, I think. I'm going to include this. In the music down there. Like I look like, I don't know, my health workers. And they are the ones who will include this down there. I'm gonna go and go, 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 go. I need the importance of the support of the religious leaders. I need the importance of the support of the political leaders. I need the importance and support of the cow. I need the rich, the importance and support of the hash. That's why we're here. And that's what we are going to discuss. Because we all play the finger one. But specifically, I think we are going to discuss this my areas. And as I think, construct what they are put down as the objectives of this meeting. We are going to talk about the re-arch immunization services. And we have a maniac here at this team. We took the wrong way to go out of the game. We can have one, we can include in the game of the case. And specifically, we can have a lady, that's the new scene. And we can go to the car of money. Or we have a money, we can have a lot. The key ideas is this, then we know. And then we have been about speaking, I didn't know about it in the community. We can have a lot. We can have a chicken, we can have a chicken, we can have a lady. And we can go back, we can go back, we can get it. And it is one of the medicines. So it might, it might sound like a good thing, because it's a little more accurate. Confusing a lot. We're going to have a good dish, a good job, don't eat. A lot of them, we're going to go, we're going to go, we're going to go, we're going to go. I can walk up, I can walk down. But I can't put the camera in it. Put the camera in it, my area participation. So I can go, I can go, I can go, I can go. So that when you go home, or so when you go out to areas, you talk about it in the conference, or you are in the conference, you see what's up. And I know, I see, Ministry of Health talked about it like this. You stop confusing our people. But I know you're rude, but I think you don't talk about what, what's leading, my lady. Then again, if you can go out, is my time, I check this. Again, if you can go to a market, we can go to a market, we can go to a market. our workers, we are the workers, we are the workers of the country, we are the workers of the world. So we are not permission to do it. Now we are not allowed to do it. Of course, we want to do it. But if we don't do it, we will be the worst. So we can't do it again. We will not do it again. Again, we will not do it. We will not do it again. We will not do it again. How many people should be here? What should be there? How many should be there? And then, we are the workers of the world. This is the way we are working. We are the workers of the country. We are the people. People. Our workers are the people. So we should not do it again. We should not do it again. We will not do it again. Our workers are the people. Our workers are the people. We are not allowed to do it. We are really scared. We are not allowed to do it. They go there, they bleed, they get the感染, they get sick, they get infected. So, our workers are not allowed to do it. I think you should know because what is our own business? And I think they will do it. Why? They want you to know about it and what they want to do about it. Because we are not allowed in the house. We are afraid. So I had something from this week. I'm not going to give you. But I fear this. I decided to move on. So, who are in the house? Who are so not allowed in the house? Because we are not allowed to do it. But again, our workers, we are the workers. And we are not allowed to do it. We want to respect you more than our health workers. Because you are the people. Reverend, sir, if you think about we can't do it, we are the workers. Our workers are the people. They are the people. You should think that they are seriously. And something even our work, our health workers. So, we want to give you that information and ask you to be part of our system to promote safe manner in our districts. Again, if you think about it, we are not allowed to do it. Of course, the main thing is immunization. And not that. By two, when you are over the top of the world, we are the workers. I don't know if you have that proof of here, but I hope you understand. No doubt is immunization. We say, I'm a town police. But Steve, you also want to talk about other things that affect us in this city. But one of those issues we want to talk about with you, especially our chief administrator officers, their security officers, uh, areas, even police leaders, really general, is our health workers. We get these health workers, we recruit them, we send them to you there, we recruit them with the district service commission, we take them to the health facility. But, of course, we really try a lot across this country. Sometimes it's very disturbing situations. We are health center. The city is not safe. It's not safe. Also, we are health center. The city is not safe. But it doesn't work in the district areas. And our workers are not allowed to do it. I think we are not allowed to do it. We are not allowed to do it. We want to help you. And we want special interest for the health workers. We are saying, we are the workers. We are the workers. It's a lady joke. They want from money for you. If I got there right now, I have to go away. How can I? How can you recruit a child? And anyway, last three days has never been on the station. And the district leaders there. And you must say, I'm talking to you, sir. You are health workers. Are you denying? Why are health workers? Can I see health workers by your backs, please? Uh, you are there. Where do you say that enhanced? But I want to say, sir. Why you're giving away? You are not yet satisfied. So now, our point is RDC is out. If a health worker is not satisfied with the enhanced salary that we can say give us, we have so many doctors in the street. Last week, we advertised for sixteen positions of doctors. Sixteen positions of doctors. Was for minister and for so I'm making you a mistake, but I think these are great questions. We advertised for sixteen positions of doctors. I have one thousand five hundred. And for B, doctors apply for sixteen positions. For the sixteen positions, one thousand five hundred. And for B, doctors who are on the street, who are applying for sixteen positions. We are even failing to see how to show this step. I think we could. I think our health worker is not satisfied with what the government is offering. I think the best is to exit. And then we get those who are on the street to come in and work. So that also when they come in and they can work, they also exit. I think we are getting to that stage. Or we get to making sure that people who are already ready to work should be consistent. You are a keeper of this belief. I think you have a customer who's not ready. You don't have. We may achieve that. At least in the room. And you find a doctor there who is even paid less than our government is. But he can never be seen in that way. But why would our doctor not work every day and yet is paid two times more than the doctor paying in a mission? A doctor who is paid three times more than the chief administrator officer? Who pays him? If you see the salary of the chief administrator officer and you look at the salary of the doctor, but you find the doctor is not working. It was all the thing in the screen. In the jarzaga, in the screening, which is the thing we are saying, again, the spending center, our forehead and the lady. So we really want to reach the bottom of this problem. And I'm happy to have hours here. I'm happy to have our diseases, our diseases, and your diseases. So we need to talk about that. Finally, we also need to talk about the general health service division. And of course, our emphasis is health promotion and disease prevention. And we are being trained. We make the health extension work as a D C and the P H Ts. And we want to use those to support prevention of diseases at the household level, at the community level. And we also want to encourage you. Here, I think we are not yet trained, but at least in one H Ts. So we also want to encourage you to support those military teams and the health extension workers uh, in those areas. To see how we prevent disease and how best of those diseases can be avoided for our health facilities. And some of the areas of immunization, however, we have here, we see everything matters far. That even hospitals, the sanitation and hygiene, process of fever, the city, so that we reduce malaria. You know, Mr. Evans, he says, at this gas. He says, we are a minister of diseases, not a minister of health. Why do we wait for diseases to wait in the health facility? Why do you go and attack them at the community? And you are no longer the director of the general health service. I'll be calling you the director general of diseases. That's why I'm calling you. I should prevent diseases. So that we have few diseases. And health facilities. And there are people who miss it. Most. So this is why we are here. You discuss those areas. I'm ready to play it. I tell you, so I want to say that it's good. But it's very unlikely. It's not a good idea. It's not very good. Next material, look. You can't leave. I'm going to say that this is what we see. And I think this is what we should do. And I think we address this problem. This is the way we should do it. In the health center, this is the challenge. And we should address it like this. In that case, we become more practical. Not theoretical things that we present for textbooks. So with those very many words, apologies from the program coordinators. Uh, I want to stop there. I'm not clear in the meeting. Because that will be done in the P S. I think I want to stop there. And we request our moderator to come and lead us from the next. But as we were talking, we were joined by the director of the health, Dr. Tania Chabalisa, who has just been here. Tania, you found us talking about emphasis on health promotion and disease prevention. And I think that is the best we can do. As we, we are not able to do that. Thank you very much. So you are ready to get the problem. Well, thank you. As I said, we are moving forward.
Professor Lee, it's not easy to learn. Chair against the commission of the health staff. I want to thank you. Let's give him another round of applause. And thank you very much. We have summarized all that we are going to. Because we are going to now presentations. I want to ask you one of us to pay attention to that. I think it's delicious presentation. And I want to ask also the presenters to be free. The audience, please, let's keep focused. Because this is the risk of the one of this meeting. We need to know the performance. The ratio, E P R. These are all which I also know. We are about the area vaccination. And I also the doctor, we also introduce us to the performance and we should be ready to meet each other. So at this moment, we are inviting. So, no doubt, organist, please, my hope.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mavissa, commissioner and colleagues, all of that, my organist and program manager of the immunization program committee. We invite all of us to join us. As they were to get our presentation. All of us. I want, we have received the guidance and we are going to try our best to make our presentation as clean as possible. We shall say what immunization does, its benefits, what is going well in this region where the challenges we have to come. Then, my colleague will come also and take us through the new vaccine that we introduced, barrier vaccine. Some districts, this region introduced. We shall talk about that. And then thereafter, our commissioner will also take us through my town's child health issues. And those are the three presentations we shall have. We invite Albert to take us through immunization.
Thank you very much, program manager. While I came much earlier, I had some colleagues I met in the street asking themselves, we are seeing how the best in the program is this the start of the best that we know? My claim is not to have had. But I want to put a disclaimer that we are not related at all. We just share in them. But allow me to take you briefly the journey of the immunization program. Uh, the journey we have moved together because we want with the district government of the immunization program. So we started as earlier in back years. Do you know whether we still have things we have on those days? Nineteen sixty-two. That's when we started the journey of immunization. And then, we were targeting two diseases. That is Borrelia and TB. We have, it's about sixty-two. Sixty-two. Yes, congratulations. Oh, you have as old as the immunization program. You can. You are as old as the immunization program. And later, in nineteen seventy, there, we introduced, because there was, you know, was starting by then, we have been we have been approved immunization program. I think I did. And the later, they launched the UNEP program. Now, UNEP is Uganda National Expanded Program for Immunization. And that's when we increased the number of uh, diseases again in six thousand diseases. How many six thousand diseases? Two thousand nine. One, six thousand diseases. Uh, that's the organization brand we began with. It was C C, maybe the K. So, UNEP, the result of that, we can't see any those six thousand diseases. We don't know where the data will keep us up. I'm always at that time, we will get that. I will attack on some law. So now, in nineteen ninety-one, Uganda was ranked the best in Africa, the best among the best countries in immunization. As we all get, we get resident people. And we need some more. Bonna, my friend. Eh, bonna, my friend. Bonna, my sister, so they are in the tree. That thing, bonna, my friend. As about bonna, we are immunization. We got nineteen ninety-one. Back up. We are trying to increase the number of diseases. We are getting the vaccines. We are trying to find out which is the one that after the COVID. Now, COVID vaccine, we managed to chase it away. Not in there, chase it away. The biggest contribution was immunization program. And that's why I value our craft for myself. After this work, we did a very great job in kicking away these diseases. I love those men who did the work when we introduced the, when we brought the COVID vaccine. And our driver, then was the doctor, Mavissa. And she has really improved it. Now, because vaccines work, proven to be working, we had to target more diseases that are living in our communities that we can be able to eliminate with the vaccine. Now, in twenty twenty-two, we introduced the second dose of measles. But even before the second dose of measles, because we can't, we can't remember. We are coming, we are coming, we are two diseases. We are still accompanying that. And then into a vaccine. So I introduce here, so I can relate to why we need to use the second dose of measles. How can I introduce here? Here, if you are vaccine. Is that why you are going to? Eh? How can I introduce here? It protects me, but yours. How can I introduce here? Rota, that dose, when we switched from rotavirus to vaccine. Now, we said, now this is now the hot cake of the table. We introduced in twenty twenty-five, just once, the one in Apple. We introduced here, malaria vaccine. As I can, I can't remember. I didn't do this. We introduced here, the vaccine. We didn't do that. We don't do that. We don't do this. We want to change, we want to change. But the diseases, it's the greatest of our communities. So that's vaccine, it is good. You can add in the second bit, it's a bit more expensive. It's a bit more expensive. For you, it's vaccine, it's fine. So if we work together, we can chase away all these diseases that are close to the So this is the journey we have moved together. And we are still moving together. And we don't want to leave anyone behind. We have moved together at here. We, 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 we are ready at this. We are ready for this. Now, this is not a big, a small, a big time. It's targeting that with vaccines, eliminating the suffering. But that's the delicate. There's about fourteen vaccine-prevalable diseases. I don't know what it was, because there are sixty. So six thousand diseases. This is a big issue. But I'm not just targeting for, for vaccination. At the beginning, how many? Fifteen. So now we are targeting fourteen. And those are the ones, because of the information, each and every one, each and every disease. But now, the other one, the left one, you are saying, is now what we are not targeting. And later, we are telling you why. We are not possible to be having without the presentation. Now, we are targeting. Because malaria is one of the highest contributors of the, for being present and dead in our communities. Now, we are okay and pressing that the desperation we have to get this vaccine that can make us reduce the mortality. Now, almost completely, you are immunization. I think after introducing malaria vaccine, we need twelve, twelve vaccines that are for the vaccine, that are targeting, that are fourteen diseases, that are accompanying measles. Now, we need vaccines, it is to heal the soul. Yeah, it's a good. On a morning, man, I am going to teach. For my, I'm a service commissioner, I'm a farmer. I'm going to collect it. I'm going to be, I'm going to be wrong. I'm not going to say it, I'm going to be wrong. To my staff, when I miss it, I'm bad process. I would get. Eh? So my staff, you are not concerned for example, I'm going to use you to deal with that. But this place, it is a chance to catch up. I'm going to use you. I'm going to take this way. We need to be there. So we have to work out with the M C. Make sure that this delivery is, this is this. I'm going to protect the children. I'm going to give it. We are here. So we are, we are here. It's not just here. We are here. It's crazy, it's not easy. It's crazy, it's not easy. It's crazy, it's not easy. I want to eat, it's a great time. My, it's a good day now. On a morning. Eh? So, I think we see it. I want those, I want to hear. I want to, it's a good vaccine. It's a good thing. I can, I can, I can. I will ask. So, our ways of vaccines, it's a good thing. So, I think it's a good thing. So, but we give some as six weeks. Ten weeks, fourteen weeks. I think it's a good thing after fourteen weeks. It will be so, so very long. I think it must be, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. The measles, I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to finish it. I'm going to speak to the measles. It's a very good thing. The measles, it's not English. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be so. I'm sorry, that's it. The measles. So that we are going to be, we are going to be. It's a good approach, yeah, measles. It's not a good thing. It's a good thing. I thought we would just come on. It's a good thing. Now, the second dose of measles has been introduced at eighteen months. Our community, we expect in one hour, we are going to get the second dose of measles. Now, I think it's a good thing. I don't think it's too. I thought we don't communities. We are going to be, we are going to be. I don't want to come to you. We are going to be, we are going to be. Communities, we are going to come to you. I think we need to, we are going to come to you. I think we need to, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. I think malaria, I'm going to be, I'm going to be. Malaria, it's a good thing. Ah, it's a good use. It's a good thing. I'm going to be. I'm going to be, we are going to be. We are going to be, we are going to be. I'm going to be. I think it's a good thing. In six months, we are going to get. I say, fast three days. It's a good thing. I want to have. So, I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I think I'm here. We need to get. I think it's a good thing. The measles, the second dose. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. We are going to be, we are going to be. I think we are going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. So I think we are going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I don't want to be, I don't want to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. We need malaria vaccine. I think we are not introducing in all districts. We should talk about why we are not introducing. So, I'm glad. I'm glad. And lastly, the management, it's a good thing. We need, we are going to be. We need, we need. We need to have a, we need to have a. I thought it's a good use. It's a good thing. We need to have a, we need to be. I think I can, I can. I think I have six months. It's a good use. I think I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. So I think I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I think we, we are here. On a morning. So I think we are going to be. I think I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. If I think I'm going to be, I'm going to be. So I think we are going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. Then I think we are going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I think we are going to be, I'm going to be. Our workers, we are going to be, we are going to be. We are going to be, we are going to be. I think we are going to be. We are going to be, we are going to be. We are going to be, we are going to be. I think we are going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. And we can, we can. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. But I think, I think. We are going to be, I'm going to be. We are going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. I'm going to be, I'm going to be. It's a good thing.[1698.72]
... Ati 102, 102 y 103. Ya mi matina la vacina, madre, ya me voy a 10. 102. Accesas ya de arriba, va, va, na, ho. Borro, hausforti. Va, va, du, va, va, du, va, va, du, va. Va, tu, ya, bu, tigelsi, mi, ne, onu, ta, rufu, mi, na, bui. Vata, vacina, ato, mi, tigelsi, yo. Xanu, na, na, ka, o, ti, na, vacina, arre. Va, ya, bu, ampe, fi, ne, bu, emetu, arre, e, na, kanan, ya, va, na, vata, ke, ma, gasa, ti, mi, na, ampe. Bu, na, tu, kanan, tu, na, bu, mu, kanan, tu, bu, pe, ta, kavu, ka, ta, so, ya, muzas, muz. Karama, pre, xan, ya, si, ni, u, pa, mi. Ati, to, ha, ba, sa, ba, bu, ma, ti, pe, es, 102, na, ba, in, ta, bu, su, ru, na, ba, sa, pa, ke, zere, ba, ba. Borro, hausforti. Va, tu, ya, bu, mis, tijro, onu, ampe, tigelsi, ah. Ni, mu, lo, pe, bu, ya, bu, tu, ha, mu, i, ne, ri, ite, ku, ha, te, na, bu, hausforti, va, sa, ka, mis, tijro. Ti, na, ba, na, ti, ti, vata, ke, vata, ke, la, vacina. Don't know why. The answers are with you. The press, re, mu, tu, ha, bu, kis, bu, kesi, ni, na, sho. So, hati, si, muzas, 102, si, na, ba, si, si, bu, si, ya, tu, arri, e, si, bu, ku, ti, ti, si. Na, bu, na, ba, na, ba, ya, bu, sa, mi, si, ya, ka, ba, na, fa, ba, la, sho, tu, ma, si, ya, bu, si, bu, la, si, ya, ba. So, hati, si, ba, mi, tu, ni, le, le, si, ba, i, ya, si, ni, le, bu, ha, ni, le, si, na, bu, la, ma, ya, ya, bu, ke, zere, bu, funda. E, si, ta, geti, ka, de, ne, ti, ka, wa, na, bu, na, bu, le, le, ki, bu, la, vacina, ti, ka. Bu, na, asa, ba, ka, ba, la, o, mi, ka, na, ba, va, ti, funda, si, es, bu, si, na, ba, te, ka, ki, sa, bu, ti, si, ti, si, ti, si, ti, si. Si, ti, si, ti, si, ti, si. Va, ya, bu, ti, ne, bu, ya, bu, bu, mi, ya, ba, na, bu, ku, ta, ni, sa, bu, ya, na, ba, bu, ti, si, mi, ta, ta, ni, sa, bu, ya, na, bu, cha. Ta, ni, sa, bu, ya, mi, si, ka, wa, ti, si, mi, ki, bu, si, bu, la, ba, na, bu, na, bu, na, bu, bu, na, bu, bu, na, bu, ta, ni, si, ta, ni, si. Ah, ba, ro, si, le, ti, bu, na, ki, tu, tu, ma, ni, la, tu, si, ka, mi, e. Ah, so, hati, si, muzas, 102, na, ba, sa, si, bu, si, ya, i, na, si, si, zere, sa, bu, ka, mu, ti, le, bu, ah, 102, si, tu, te, ku, ha, ta, ti, la, vacina, bu, si, bu, ta, ni, si. Ta, si, la, ba, na, ba, bu, la, si, 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 si. Ati, si, le, ki, sa, pi, ku, ha, na, bu, na, li, ti, le, si, kati, bu, si, lo, di, ya, ki, le, sa, bu, bu, si. Onka, kati, bu, si, ya, ki, ma, li, sa, onka, ta, li, ki, lu, na, ka, ba, ka, ni, ma, ta, li, ka, na, ba, di, bu, bu, ki, bu, si, ka, ba, di, bu. La, ma, na, bu, vata, ka, na, ni, vi, ti, wa, visa, ni, vi, ti, tu, visa, ta, geti, ti. Ati, ka, na, bu, mu, ni, wa, ma, li, e, ta, ko, ni, ya, tre, ma, ma, di, bu, onka, vata, ka, na, ma, li, ya, wa, onka, bu, si. Bu, ki, bu, si, wa, visa, ma, li, e, ati, si, le, ma, si, onka, bu, bu, si, onka, bu, si, wa, bu, si, pa, ka, visa, ma, li, ya, ti, ka, ti, le, wa, bu, si, la, visa, na, si, ma, li, ya, fa, ati, si, le, ma, si. Ato, bu, ki, bu, si, wa, bu, ti, ku, si, ke, bu, na, bu, si, bu, wa, na, fa, 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 e, si, ta, ke, si. Asa, wa, bu, ki, bu, si, wa, visa, ba, bu, si, ki, na, bu, bu, si, na, bu, vata, ti, la, si, na, ta, u, ti, si, ta, kati, bu, wa, na, ta, u, tu, ya, bu, di, ya, bu, la, si, bu, bu, ka. Ati, bu, si, ta, kati, bu, le, tu, ma, si, sa, bu, va, ta, li, kanan, a, li, onka, va, ta, li, kanan, bu, na, ho. Na, tu, bu, kati, bu, le, tu, bu, ta, ke, zere, bu, si, si, si. Ni, na, ba, ho, a, bu, ti, e, ta, ko, ni, si, di, bu, sa, ba, di, bu, wa, si, ya, bu, bu, ba, na, a, fa, 102. Ati, bu, ta, ba, bu, wa, bu, ma, na, bu, mu, wa, ka, ba, ti, onka, wa, bu, ma, na, bu, ba, bu, wa, bu, ti, di, ya, bu, ka, ba, ma, li, ya, fa, ta, ta, kati, bu, le, si. Ati, a, bu, la, si, 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 bu, pi, ti, ho, ni, ka, ka, o, ha, te, mi, di, si, bu, ti, bu, si, mi, di, si, mi, di, si, bu, si, sa, bu, 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 bu. So, hati, si, ya, tu, ka, bu, ni, me, mu, si, su, bu, ta, bu, bu.
So I think, what we need to do is to raise the awareness around malaria, so that we can prevent the spread of malaria in our communities, and that's why we have a lot of people who are infected with malaria. So I think, we have to make a great effort to protect this disease, so that we can prevent the spread of malaria in our communities. We have a community that is actively working on it, and we do need to take some steps to help it. We have a lot of projects, we have a lot of projects to do. Now, we have a district that has a lot of projects, so we need to get this done, so that we can move things, so that we can work together, so that we can solve problems. We have seen a lot of cases of malaria, so we have to work together, so that we can prevent the spread of malaria. So I would like to thank you very much. However, I do not know how that, as was presented, you are joined by our chief guest, the minister of health, the director, and me, you all. Let me invite the person to come and take us very quickly. We are told you have, you have probably ten minutes to take us quickly through the malaria vaccine slides, and then thereafter, we shall handle what you have to do, and let us see.
Thank you, program manager, chief guest, director, chair of the research, which is the person, he is also attending, he has taken part in various areas, and he has done a lot of jobs, so I thank him, thank you for that. But I just wanted to emphasize one point about this, which is presented, that one case of this was in Germany, and we had seventy four cases. So if you have just two cases in a district, you don't have the intention to get another positive number of cases. This slide has been presented, and it just summarizes the achievements of the health sector overall. See where we are, during the public case, something bad, when we hear infant mortality rate, it was in the early days. But as you can see, the under five mortality rate, two thousand, reduced from one fifty one, to fifty, and one thousand ninety five, that's a very big achievement. It can only happen in the adult countries, but it's happening here. The infant mortality rate, the children who have born and died before their first birthday, they reduced from eighty eight to thirty six, very good job. Those, that is the period of, yes, we are, why did the children who have born and died within eight days of birth, they are not dead, reduced from thirty three to twenty two. So from those indicators where we are standing now, fifty two under five mortality rate, thirty six infant mortality rate, twenty two, we are at over mortality rate by one thousand. If a lot of efforts is going to be, they need another twenty years, you will see these figures coming down to this number five, and that will be a very big achievement for the country. So, the people who are getting negative information, that vaccination, it creates Africa, they are talking opposite of the facts, because if vaccination was killing young children, our death rate for children would be miserable. The fact that the death rate of children, under five, under one, under, under one month, the death rates, all of them significantly going down, it means vaccination and other interventions are working, and we are saving more people than we will be saving if these interventions are already placed. That is the purpose of, of this slide, so that we are in the right time, we just need to handle the difficulty to provide. Um, I did say that, they, to move a step further, I think science has done a great job, a bit struggling, the population used to ask us, when we are pushing for audio, DPT vaccines, the population would ask, why are you vaccinating against the rare diseases? And they're not vaccinated against the common diseases, the ones we see every day, and the answer is, that mission has been answered. The most common disease in our patients, for both adults and children, is malaria. And now, we are seeing, they, that's, so, in Uganda, the top six villages, who contribute sixty percent of malaria disease percentage to, are those, Oyemba,巴拉雷， and as you can see, as you go down, you don't see any district in our region, which is good news. It depends on the malaria burden, the region of our current disease, is not the major contributor, that's good news. So when we go to give the special why, not many districts where you could get malaria vaccine, this is the reason, because the vaccine has gone to where the burden is very high. So these districts are the biggest contributors, and if you see the burden of disease, uh, uh, malaria, yesterday, so thirty twenty two, at the time of running for the malaria vaccine introduction, you see the dark rate and the light rate, they are the districts that have very high transmission, high transmission and mobility, and you see as we move down to our region, you see a lot of white and even whites, colors, the most of Kigazi is white, and the big part of Karori is also white and red. So that, this might be the one that was used up to determine, we are in this part, so we are going to vaccinate against. Uganda is very lucky, because in other districts, in other countries, they started in small, few districts, few districts, but Uganda has hatched into this in a very big scale. And this slide is very valuable, basically, that we are many methods of controlling malaria, as you know, there have been struggling, clearing bushes and rock holes, clearing static and water, using hospital nets, in areas like Abuja, we have been, uh, doing what we call seasonal malaria prevention, and this is what Abuja, every month, children under five are given a dark rate, to prevent infection. On top of that, now we are introducing the malaria vaccine. So this slide means, if you use the nets as an application intervention alone, you achieve forty five percent malaria, reducing malaria death and disease. If you use the net, then you add the vaccine, you meet the effective efficacy. If you use the net and seasonal malaria prevention, the one we are giving in Abuja, to twenty two, before the rainy season comes, you get seventy eight percent. If you combine the three, you have the effect, you do seasonal malaria prevention, you add the vaccine, you get ninety two percent efficacy. Efficacy means, the chance of avoiding malaria accurately. Now, this message means, that even when we are saying malaria vaccine has been introduced, no to abandon other control measures, the net use must continue, clearing bushes and rock holes must continue, and in the areas where they are creating prevention, taking drugs before you have the vaccine, all those measures must continue. Now, a summary of the introduction plan, I won't go through this, but to summarize this, to say that the malaria vaccine is carried as part of the strategic plan for elimination, or eradication, or elimination of malaria disease, and is also joining as part of the plan, part of the, of the national immunization strategic plan. So the malaria vaccine is joining the strategic plan for malaria elimination, is joining a strategic plan for immunization, to be an additional tool, and the target is that by end of twenty twenty six, we have reached a different percentage of the children. We have reached a five percent of the children, if the one hundred and five, it's a significant difference. So the introduction plan for malaria vaccine is a three year plan, started in twenty twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six, and by the end of twenty six, we expect to have reached eighty five percent of the children mortality, and the children mortality, my children would begin from six months, literally up to two years. But, the first dose is at six months, the second dose at seven months, the third dose at eight months, the last dose at eighteen months. So that is key for malaria vaccine, a child to be fully protected has received four doses. Three doses are not enough, a child will not be protected. And this vaccine is not going to prevent all cases of malaria, we have to include this claim, so that by the end of the day, the health sector is not, actually not picking each one. The vaccine prevents via malaria, malaria that causes hospitalization, malaria that causes death, the, the children can still get mild form of malaria, but it will not kill them. So this was going to be the next slide that I was, oh, I had reached on. The maximum value is under twenty one, if you go in the market in Kampala hospitals, private hospitals, you'll find other forms of, of, of malaria vaccine. But the one which has been introduced in the public health sector is called Alapri Prime Matrix, and it is, it, it, okay, this is for health, so I have, I give the gold card about this one, but this is a liquid vaccine, so it doesn't, it doesn't have vaccine, but what, what, it is gotten, injected, like any other, and it goes in immunization. It is not a campaign that is just come, it is going to end after a short time, it is going to be in our immunization, like CDC has been there, like DPT has been there, and other vaccines. We also work with the private sector. We also use, uh, work with the private sector, I've been advised that I must in this area too. Uh, we work with the private sector, we work with the KNFP hospitals, we also work with the private hospitals. But we also work in collaboration, and now, we are working in the vaccine system, we are penalizing our money, um, districts is starting among the selected districts, because you have seen this slide which shows a hundred and five districts, you have seen the districts in this picture, it's a good example, who is not vaccinated. Five in a one, one in in, 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 and those districts, I tell you, I'm selecting now, the districts that are in malaria danger, Sino, Asom, uh, Bilisi, Chilungu, and Ngu, those which have high burden, it's, they see the malaria burden, we are, we are not getting the benefit, we are not, we are not, so it needs to continue with the other measures. So the, the slide here, double, they are emphasizing that we want to protect the private sector. Someone who trained in government, and now are working private, are in the free international session, and who, who are training it, so that they can also, so they can also, so they can also, in conclusion, our next slide, that, we are not going to, 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 it's a problem, it's a problem, we are not going to, we are not going to, we are not going to vaccinate in all the private hospitals, and we are not going to, we are not going to, and in our free, we are not going to vaccinate, and we are not going to, we are not going to, we are not going to, for, for, this district sector, that we are not going to vaccinate, I am not going to, we are 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 not going to, because that, that, that is a method of this, of this, okay? When they are, when they are, when they are, we are in the numbers, there's a lot of community, they have, I have been seeing, some, doctors, she has, they have, have vaccinated, vaccinated children, the evidence we have is the opposite of what they have. So they are, they are in the numbers, there's a lot of vaccines that they are to keep African children. If you have the proof, called, which are present in the US, they are over eighteen vaccines, all the vaccines we have, they have, but they also have some vaccines that we don't have, some vaccination is a worldwide program, some, they are not, they are not in the numbers, it's a, 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 that's the, we are emphasizing that, we are communicating, vaccinate, of course, in the discussion, we will be, some of the issues, this period, so they will see injections are a danger, and programming, you know, they are, I hope it's a, and it's one of the, until it is eighteen months, until nine months, then I'm looking, because this is a lot of, so the issue of injections should not be a worry, because vaccines are not like drugs, they stop over the, and, 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 so those are the, some of the points that we have to pay, the districts that are involved, that are involved, that, 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 that,
Um, thank you very much, uh, in reference to me, I'm sure I used it very well, and I shouldn't go outside that. My name is Dr. Richard Ogani, the commissioner for reproductive maternal and child health at the Ministry of Health. Um, I'm here to present a few slides, I thought I would do more, but I don't, I think I will get more time next time. Uh, but importantly, I want to begin by saying, uh, I'm here to give an overview of how we are planning our maternal and child health interventions as a country, where we want to go, where we are, and, uh, and where our body and Chigazi are at this point in time. So I hope I'll, 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 so that I can spare the other speakers' time. So Uganda is part of the global community, we have targets that are made according to how the rest of the world is moving, and very quickly on this slide, uh, we have targets that are ending between twenty and thirty, and those are all sustainable development goals, and we are racing, we are running against time. Some of you who always listen to me trying to push you, because time is running, and we need to achieve, we need strong mothers and the babies from time, and it's important at this point to know, that where we want to go, we want to ensure that in Uganda, no one gets pregnant by mistake. We still have so many women who are getting pregnant by mistake, well, babies cannot be born by mistake, but getting pregnant must be an intentional process, so we have something called an intended pregnancy, and forty five percent of pregnancies are intended. So this is just the global picture, but now, in our national development plan four, we have targeted that we can naturally match the national, the global sustainable development targets of reducing maternal mortality, women who are dying because of pregnancy-related complications, from one, where we are now, to seventy, uh, one hundred thousand by twenty thirty. And we can also reduce the number of newborns who are dying, uh, to twelve by one thousand, uh, light birth, and also reduce the number of, uh, under five mortality. So that is how the picture looks like, and these are in our national, uh, development plan four, which is supposed to end by twenty thirty. So outside that, also, to achieve the other main targets, we need to have, uh, uh, our processes very strong, especially antenatal care. We want every pregnant woman to attend antenatal care, four or more antenatal visits, and our target is ninety. I'll tell you where we stand now, uh, we are currently around eighty six, we need to get ninety and above, uh, we need every mother to deliver in a health facility with the support of a skilled birth attender, and that's, our target is ninety, we want every newborn, every woman and newborn to receive an appropriate care, and our target is eighty, um, uh, there should be a better need of emergency care, our target is eighty, and we should also be able to address the social returnance of health, women should have adequate education, there must be, uh, uh, adequate incomes, at least sixty five percent, as we are having a patient. So this, we, we really don't want to speak for ourselves, because I've reduced most of the medical slides, so that our other stakeholders can also participate. So we, we invest in as a country, to ensure that we move towards where we want to go. So, uh, my next slide is showing where we put our efforts, and this is where our HPH laws and the health workers, uh, really need to put a lot of emphasis, and I know our chief guest will add to this, because most of these pillars are not working. Where you find problems, as I will show some red points in our body, uh, you'll find that these pillars are not working. Service delivery is at the center, the reason why we are here, if you forget everything, is about service delivery. Service delivery for people who are not here, our body alone has a population of three point five million people, and Chigazi also, almost the same number. So as, uh, Minister of Health, we are working very closely with the Minister of Local Government, to ensure we prevent activities to improve maternal and child health, uh, like QI collaboratives, there has been upgrade of health facilities, some of them have not been functionalized, we've been seeing, um, make sure that all their, the facilities have adult and responsive services, for sure, environment of ambulances and other services, there's also health financing, human resource medicines, this is a demonstration of how the health system should look like, but for you to get something good in the video, there must be, all those six pillars must work together. If you have, like you see, I was somewhere I will not mention, if you have, um, vaccines, and the leadership is poor, they don't know that vaccines must be kept in a fridge, and they're separate, they don't get spoiled, even if you have money, if the leadership is poor, then you'll have challenges. Government has improved investment in all these areas, health information systems, uh, leadership, service delivery, even human resource, including the numbers of health workers, including training men, but what we want to see is, are we getting something that matters this? At least there is some hope, and this slide is going to show us what are we seeing next. Over the years, um, I like this slide, but it also has, it tells us that we need to do more. Over the years, from two thousand, we have been very deliberate in counting how we are improving our, maternal and child ratio, and you can see that the Uganda demographic has varied for the last six periods, that's the last thirty years, it's been every five years, currently we stand at one eighty nine, and our target is seventy by twenty thirty, that's how we want to go. Now we have worked to move from one eighty nine women who are dying, by one hundred thousand to seventy, one eighty nine is not the one number that's dying, you may ask yourself, but one eighty nine, because we are delivering, uh, around one point six billion, one point six billion babies by year, so one eighty nine is about one hundred thousand, so it's one eighty nine times probability sixteen, that's around one thousand eight hundred mothers who are still dying, and others are dying in the villages, like we heard in Azov, without being reported. Um, just before we go far, we also have, uh, just before, yes, on this other side, you'll see, um, we have done some good work, a number of women who are dying from our health facilities does actually have low, and we are happy with that, but we want to bring this one to less than fifty, so that the population level could be less than seventy next. I'll show you the picture of our body, that previous slide has been shown by my predecessor, the other speaker, our investment in immunization has yielded results. Uganda, for child, uh, infant mortality, reducing infant mortality, uh, we are also on post achieve, the, uh, SDG for child mortality and infant mortality, and the link, the biggest margin has been immunization, no one should extract us from that. Um, a number of newborn babies also dying is coming low, and that's a good, uh, 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 indicator, and we think that with increased investment, now we are going to have a state of the attitude in our body region, we shall have more of these babies being served, next. Uh, this is antenatal care, and, uh, this is what we see at the national level, uh, our average antenatal one has been around nineties, so we've achieved the even one, uh, uh, recommendation, but we need to make sure that they come on time, the ones that come, uh, in the first couple weeks are very low, as I'll show you in some of the slides. Skill for the tennis, as in Chris, I mean, now at eighty six, for the, I'll show you how, yeah, for the picture looks like, I've also tried to, I've also tried to, next. I've, 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 I think you know most of these districts, and that's the population three point five million, you want it? Um, yes, one of the hardest key points of mind or areas where we need to put our efforts, I think where we have challenges, is that, uh, we have low HP testing. For our other leaders who are here, every pregnant woman, I did mention in the beginning that no one wants to get pregnant by chance, or by, uh,